Feel like I'm a little low. Ah geez. Essentially like clients. It's gonna be respectful. Decades. Every year the last thirty-four years has been voluntary. First one that I know of in almost my lifetime that's been this large.
Mel? I did the same exact thing, I'm like. I know. Oh, who was that, Danny? I couldn't, I couldn't see her. Just saw the forehead. Oh, okay.
There she is.
Five minutes apiece, right? Not a bad turnout for a volunteer position.
All right, good morning, everybody. Well, 7:30, we'll go ahead and call to order the August 17th Planning Commission meeting. Form everyone of the Open Meetings Act over in the northwest corner and ask for roll.
Sprite?
Here.
Dietz?
Here.
Figaroa?
Here.
Wait?
Here.
Franklin?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Griffith?
Here.
Stone?
Here.
Gilmore. We have a quorum.
Ask for approval of the full agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion? Not go ahead and please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Ask for consideration of approval of amendments of August 3rd Planning Commission meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion? Not go ahead and please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, before we open the public hearing, I appreciate the turnout, everybody, for everybody here. Just a couple of rules if we could, please. We will limit testimony to five minutes. Liz will keep track of time and give a one-minute warning on it, and we'll just, we'll proceed that way. So, this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing to consider areas of proposed annexation to amend the corporate limits as authorized by Section 16117 NRS 1943, RS up 1990. So, the public hearing is open. Let's go ahead and lead this off with city staff. If you guys kind of want to tell us what's going on here.
Morning. Good morning, commissioners. I'm gonna kick this off with just a little explanation of what we're doing here this morning and talk a little bit about some of the next steps and upcoming opportunities for community engagement. This morning, we're here to look at, and what I brought up here is, this is figure number 60 out of the 2017 Comprehensive Plan, and this shows the annexation of the community as, you know, kind of a phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, as the community grows. This was done in 2017. Following this, on December 2nd of 17, we went into contract with a consultant to do the boundary study, to look at areas of growth around the community and also look at future growth around the community and recommend, in large chunks, kind of relative to the individual phases you see here, an annexation plan for the city. And really, what commissioner, what the commission is, is deciding this morning is, does the current annexation resolution, is that in line with what you see here in the comp plan back in 2017? So, that's really the conversation this morning, is, is what we've presented in the resolution in line with what you see on your screens right now. The, following today, the next, the next meeting will be on August 25 from 5:00 to 6:30 at the library, and that is an opportunity for anybody within the annexation areas that has questions about their individual property. Will my zoning change? I'm ag, can I keep my animals? I'm on, I'm on a well, I'm on septic system, is that, you know, am I gonna be forced off of that? All of those questions about individual properties can be answered by staff and by our consultants, again, on, on August 25, and that's where those questions need to come, is before staff, our consultants, and some other folks that would be there to help us answer those questions. It'll be a large, we'll have, the library will be, kind of be set up into the various areas of the community, there'll be an annex, kind of the bigger chunks, so that people know where they need to go relative to where they're living, and we have some organization there. Following that, the next meeting is gonna be on 9/7, that'll be a city council meeting, and that would be the first reading of the annexation ordinance, and at that time, there is a public hearing as well at that time. That's another opportunity for landowners to ask specific questions about their property, if, if they didn't get those questions answered on 8/25. Following that sec, first reading then, on 9/20 would be the second reading, and on 10/4 would be the third reading, and at that, at that point, then the annexation would be complete. I think, I think that kind of covers a little bit. I'm gonna step up here and just talk about these boards behind me briefly, and what I'll do here is, so I still have the microphone, I'll point over here. So, this, the board that's laid out in landscape mode, the green areas on this board are showing development, either commercial, residential, around the city. So, these are developers that, that come in and they don't want to be in city limits, and so they develop outside of the city, and, you know, as we grow as a city, we start to grow in and approach those. The other thing this board has is there's a dark blue line on that board. That represents the, the city limits back in 2000, and I'll get up here in a minute and just kind of point out where some of the growth has occurred to the city limit line since 2000. The, this board does not show two large areas that are in the annexation resolution. One of them is the airport, and the other one is the city wellhead area that sits out to the southwest. So, those two areas are not shown on, on the landscape map. The, the map over here that's in profile, that is the, the comprehensive annexation map of all the areas around the community to be annexed. If there's, you know, if there's a need for me to get up and, and point or refer to something over there, I can sure do that as we go through the process here this morning. So, with that, again, the, the commission today is charged with, is this annexation plan in general alignment with the 2017 Comprehensive Plan in terms of city growth? I guess one last statement, why do we need to annex? As the city grows and grows up against subdivisions that are outside city limits that are, we cannot skip across those areas and incorporate properties beyond that as, as those develop. So, in order for us to grow, to grow as a community in a city, all of those boundaries need to be adjoining. So, that's, that's really why we annex in, in this way, is because we're up against growth. You look at some of these green areas over here, or, or look at where the city is, and as we continue to grow northwest, northeast, west, we're up against boundaries there that we just can't skip across. So, with that.
Any, any, any questions for Steve? On the process or what we're actually looking at today? Okay. Val, do you have anything to add? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and, anyone that'd like to speak in favor of this, let's start there? Okay? Okay, anyone like to speak against? Let's go ahead and, first one up, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate it. And I don't expect any answers to any of my questions. It's more or less.
I'm sorry, ma'am, apologize. Could I get you to sign in?
Sure.
I will, I'll just go ahead and say it blanket. When you come up, please sign in and, and then go ahead and speak if you would, just so we have a record of who's.
Oh, sure.
Speaking, yeah.
Hang on.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you there.
Better not cut into my time.
You're fine.
And I get very nervous at public speaking, so please bear with me.
You're fine.
Some of the questions that I have, and I'm only, only gonna speak to the area of 1.2, that affects my home. So, I'm not gonna speak for anyone else in the other area. So, I want to know, what is the justification for annexing this area? You spoke of it, okay. Are you just collecting more land so you can collect more taxes, and where will that tax money go and how will it be spent? In fact, area 1.2 will cost the city more than the benefit it will receive from annexing this area by $1,237, according to your own boundary study. What kind of fiscally responsible business would do this? I'm quite sure that any business would not engage in practices in which there is a loss of, on rate of return of investment. According to your own study, annexation of the area known as 1.2 holds little to no benefit to either the city or the residents in this area. The main reasoning noted in the boundary study seems to be that it is not fair that residents of area 1.2 get the benefit of so many city services without having to pay full taxes for those services. Perhaps the city could visit with the county and garner some of the high property taxes that are paid in this area. The residents in this area are seemingly being punished by proximity. How many businesses are well within the city limits yet are not annexed? Unless you are operating the city as a charity organization, the strategic goal should be and must be to improve the prosperity of existing residents. The letter from the city dated August 11, 2021 suggests that one of the benefits of being within the city limits would include reduced water rates. So, I pay $0 now to flush my toilet, water my lawn, water my apple orchard, wash my clothes, et cetera, and the city plans to reduce my water rate. Another benefit noted in the same letter is that utility services will be reduced. Although no specific utility services are noted, the city is not in control of gas services or electrical services. These services are provided by MPPD and Black Hills Energy. These companies set the prices of their own services. Please explain how the city plans to achieve this goal. Do you have the spare capacity of resources to serve the new citizens and land area? If not, what are your plans to manage the extra load? With that in mind, have comprehensive studies been conducted as it relates to the management of sewage treatment, water treatment, drainage, water supply, roadway congestion and maintenance, police, firefighting, parks, and schools? If such studies exist, each person located within the proposed annexation area 1.2 should be provided copies of the same. If such studies exist, how much spare capacity does the city's water supply have? What is the projected timetable and cost for the next jump in capacity? Is the proposed annexation of area 1.2 how you intend to allocate the remaining capacity, assuming there is such capacity? Does the proposed annexation of area 1.2 justify any timetable on your next jump in capacity, again, assuming there is such capacity? If you do not know your spare capacity, then you have no right annexing any property. Why is the city as built now not generating enough wealth to maintain essential, essential infrastructure, so much so that you are looking outside the city's boundaries to solve the problems? Maintaining roads and streets is expensive, so is providing police and fire protection, so are all the ongoing services a city provides. Will this annexation generate enough revenue to pay its share of services and then some? If so, please provide studies or documentation to show the amount of revenue you propose will be generated in the proposed annexation of area 1.2. Long-term consequences of this proposed annexation will certainly, in the end, create negative consequences in various forms, which will last for years to come. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up?
Hello, I'm Chad Paulson. I'm sorry I was unaware of all this till last night when I got home, but I was not sent a letter in the mail. My property's been subject to change more than once. I've been zoned RR, never been notified. I've been taken out of RR, which I'm agriculture on all my property. I'm in zone, looks like 4.2, okay? I'm south of the Alcorn River. I'm simply agriculture. I graze some cattle there. Y'all might be aware of the property as a, used to be a NOVAC property. I see no reason, I, I do have some property on the other side of the Alcorn River in 4.2, which is about 26 acres. It's utilized for mushroom hunting, for my grandchildren to go over there and fish camp. Family uses it. There's no buildings over there. Same thing as on the, on the south side of the river. It's simply just pasture ground. There's no development going on. There may be to the, to the, to the west of the property, which is not included in this annexation. I guess if I had a reason why you guys wanted to annex this property, it'd help me to understand more, but I have no, there, it makes no common sense. I mean, the city's not building out that direction. I mean, yes, there's a, a small development out there, but I have never heard of any reason why you'd want to build out that direction, okay? Like I said, I'm prepared, just found out about this last night. Did not receive a letter in the mail. It'd been nicer for all of us, general public, if, you know, everybody could see the green map while they're presenting, or doing their presentation, but I, I just wanted to let you know that I'm opposed to this, annexation of 4.2 land, especially on my side, and probably for everyone else there. There's just, the growth is not there, the city's growth is, is, it took them four years to do the Bradley, or what do you want to call it, development over there for the commercial? About something three miles away. I'm right on the south side of Broken Bridge. There's nothing out there, okay?
Chad, could you spell your last name for me?
Paulson, P-A-U-L-S-E-N. I would, I would, you know, anybody want to contact me and explain why they want to annex my property? I, I, I would love that.
Yeah, I don't believe you are. 4.2 is just city property.
Okay.
4.2 is all, that's our city wellhead protection area, and that is all just city property.
Across the bridge there, okay. Well, I think annexed that across the river before. You know, I hope that's the case, but if it's not, I just want to know what you're proposing. Thank you.
Morning, commissioners. My name is Pete Becker, and I'm in District 1-1, I believe, which is the original Eldorado Estates.
Excuse me, real quick, sir, I apologize. Val, could I get you to pull up the map with the zones on it so that we can see when they say what they're in? Thank you. All right, go ahead, sir, sorry.
Uh, that's the original Eldorado Estates, which was developed approximately 40 years ago. I was one of the original developers. I've lived out there for 40 years, and I guess I have some issues with what our taxes are gonna do, especially in what the services are, that we're supposed to get for the increase of taxes. Can you answer the question, is that what our taxes are going to go up percentage-wise if we're annexed into the city? Have you done that study yet?
Do we want to, do we have the numbers?
That is, I mean, that, that is a, a number that we can, that we have. So, your, your taxes will go up around 255 per 100,000 a value.
And what percentage is that?
I, I don't know what that percentage is.
Well, the percentage is that I've worked out, because I have property in the city and property out of the city. You're looking at over 17%.
Yeah, I, I haven't looked at that.
Does that surprise you, or does that sound about right?
It's about, you know, like, it's about 255 per 100,000, that.
Well, I can tell you what the mill levy is in the city, is 1.9466560. Outside the city, the levy is 1.65418400. You can do the, you can do the math, and you're gonna come up with about 17%, a little over 17%. And that's public record, so it's not something I'm making up. The thing that I'm wanting to know is, what am I gonna get for that 17%? Snow removal. My snow removal is almost instantly. The county goes up North 37th Street, they come into Rolling Hills Drive, they buzz around the Circle Porsche Place, and they're gone. I can get out, and I cannot get into an office building that I own in the city. I have a property at 2502 Lake Ridge Drive, which is the USDA office, which is a, a federal office, and in the last, I think that building's been there for eight years, and in, in that period of time, I've had to open up the street myself twice. And the federal workers get pretty upset when they can't go to work. So, I mean, what? What, what are, what am I getting for my 17%? I'm not getting my street opened up in the city now, and my house is not gonna get opened up in the future? Police protection. We have fire protection, we have, the, the rescue squad has been in our neighborhood. In the last two weeks, a state trooper has been sitting on North 37th Street controlling the traffic. Now, I assume that has something to do with northeast, or Lincoln Northeast opening up the school year, but nonetheless, the state troopers are sitting out there. So, I've got the police, police protection. Directly to the west of me is property owned by Stuart Hansen, the Stuart Hansen Estate. Most of you guys aren't young enough or old enough to remember the name Stuart Hansen, and he owns 140 acres directly to the east of me, which is in pasture ground, which is in, I don't know, I think that's in District 1-1 also. And if you would follow up on that, and if you could, you could find the answer to this, I don't know if you can or not. Stuart Hansen's son-in-law told me, Stuart Hansen was a little bit ornery.
One minute.
Stuart Hansen's son-in-law told me, when he passed away, he left in his will and his, his estate, long-term planning, that that property could not be sold until his youngest grandchild was 25 years old. Now, the only thing that surprised me about that is that it was only 25 years. So, that property is not gonna get developed for a long, long time, and that's 140 acres. The last thing I'd like to say before my time is up, you guys talk about your comprehensive plan. You spend money, you, you get people from out of town to come in here and say you got a comprehensive plan. You don't follow the plan. I had a zoning issue approximately 20 years ago at 25th and Benjamin. The comprehensive plan said, this is supposed to be commercial property, and I just got the hell kicked out of me, and it didn't turn out being commercial property. So, you don't follow your comprehensive plan. One last thing. Mike Nolan used to be the city administrator here, and he told me one thing that I'll, I'll never forget. He said, Pete, he said, we can do whatever the hell we want, as long as we got five votes.
Time.
Yeah, again, I would just, I would just remind, remind that, that their decision here today is, isn't based on, you know, those, those, those questions that I've heard so far. Their decision here today is, is the annexation that's, that's been presented in, in the intent resolution in line with what's in the comprehensive plan? That is, that is all this board is asked to, to determine. These questions really need to come back to staff on the 25th, and, you know, hopefully, we can answer many of the questions that are unknown in, 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 you know, for you. I'm not gonna say we're gonna answer them all to your satisfaction, and on the public hearing on 9/7, that's where these kinds of questions can be heard by your elected city council.
I'm David Lux. I live at 2301 Sheridan Drive. I'm also in 1.2 SID 10. Is there a chance you could bring up, like, a photo of the, you know, the Google Earth of that area? And can you tell me why that annexation stops at Eisenhower? Can you tell me why that annexation stops at Eisenhower?
Well, the short answer is, we, you know, we always have, there has to be a starting point and there has to be an ending point. And when they went out and did the study, there are things within state statute that we look at as a function of that boundary study. And so, they looked at that and they came back and presented us a map, not based on individual parcels, but a map based on larger chunks. We don't want to go in and cherry pick this piece and that piece. That becomes less, it becomes harder to stand up and support when you're cherry picking properties into an annexation. So, we looked at it in larger pieces and again, you have to start and stop somewhere.
Right. And so, I mean, you can look at these areas that are developed. You see these areas that got little tiny parcels and then you get in my neighborhood. Okay? On the other side of Eisenhower is like our neighborhood. It's not like there's a natural area here that this should be, this is more like this part of the city and this is more like this part of the not city. And so, number one, you're... Our neighborhood's nothing like that. You know, we have, we live in the country. We like our dirt roads. Okay? There's a couple of houses, a couple of properties on Eisenhower that are west of 25th that escaped it because their cost benefit was 40,000 versus 20,000 and ours is about a push. Can you tell me what it would cost for me to tie onto the sewer?
I don't know where your specific property is. If you haven't been assessed, if your property has not been assessed for water and sewer, there would be, you know, as a function of an extension project, some sort of an assessment. If there's water or sewer in front of you, obviously you could connect, but there would still be a fee to connect per linear foot.
A nominal fee? Rob, can you tell me?
Nominal, it'd be about, if it's today, if, again, if your property hasn't been assessed, but there happens to be sewer or water in front of you, I would say it's in the $50 to $55 a linear foot of frontage.
Rob, would you have a... What's the connection fee?
It's about $55 a running foot of frontage.
Okay. Yeah, and so, that's, you know, you talk to, you know, like, there's no cost to that. Okay? And then paving? What's paving worth? When you decide that my road needs to be improved?
You're probably in that $150 a square yard.
And so, you know, there's absolutely no way, no way that I can keep my house. And so, you're talking, this is 20... This area is a go because the city cost versus benefit, you know, comes out to be about a push. You've got 20,000 or $40,000 for the whole 1.2 property. Like, that's what you're making the decision on.
Yeah. No, again, this isn't the place for these questions. I'd be happy to answer these on 8/25. This is, again, this is, you've got good questions. I'm not discounting your questions. You've got good questions and I'm happy to answer those questions.
You look, you, these are people's lives. Okay? These are people's lives. Okay? You skip those two houses because it's going to cost the city 40,000 for only $20,000 of benefit. You don't look, I mean, these are people that live here. These are my neighbors. I've lived at that property since I got out of the Army in 1996. I'm looking at maybe five, 10 years I can retire and put up a barn and spend my winters building a boat. And you're talking about things that are going to assess me well over what I paid for the house, well over what my appreciated value would have been for the house. Can you bring it back down to the, or even your plan?
Time.
Excuse me?
Your time is up.
You've got a whole lot of area that's already in the city limits that's not developed. You're going to destroy neighbors' lives because your 40,000 is less than 42,000. I hope you guys could sleep with that.
Dr. Lux, please leave the paper. Thank you. Next, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Julie Dearing and I live on West Highway 275 in the 4.1 section. And I am with a lot of these people that wondering why you are annexing me. I'm assuming it's because of whole chunk buying the property behind me or beside me and they want them in the city limits. But I own farmland and my concerns are the sidewalks that you want to build, the sewer. Does this include 49th Street? And who is responsible for repairs on 49th Street? Is the city or is the county? Snow removal? Does the landowner have to pay for any repairs? I own, if sewer come in, I own 3/4 of a mile of land that is road, right next to the road. So, am I going to be having to pay for sewer on all of that? That would kill me. Thank you. I am against this.
Next?
Thank you, City Council, and thank you for the opportunity that we have to share with you our feelings this morning. I hear loud and clear, probably for the fourth time, that our plan is not the goal for this meeting is not to talk about the problems that it's going to cause us individually, but it's to vote on a plan that is accepted by a professional, an expert. And I beg you to vote against this plan. I was not involved. It's time for us Americans to wake up and understand what is going on here from the bottom line. I know money is more important than people, to a lot of people. People have asked me, Lauren, what do you have planned to do? And one of my main goals is to say, "People are more important than money." People are way more important than money. And on this plan, they said, "We've got to let an expert draw it up for us." And you know the definition of an expert that I just have accepted and love? X means out and spurt means water under pressure. And so, I beg you to vote against this plan, please.
Next up?
Morning, Council. My name is Paul Medelman. Medallion Construction, Alcorn Paving. A couple of the companies we own and manage. Also, Medelman's Lake Development. My shop is located out off of Sherwood Road to the north, a little ways there. But years ago, we located out there to, I guess, say, enjoy being outside the city limits for our purchasing power or savings that we would realize because we were in, at that time, a county industrial tract. So, over the years, we have probably saved in excess of 150, $200,000 in purchasing heavy equipment, your day-to-day stuff out there that the construction company needs to buy. One question I would have, are you going to be able to massage these boundaries in the future or through this process? Or is this just, there's no...
Yeah, this is, this is basically set up as all or none.
Okay, none? That... Well, like I said, I was in a county industrial tract, which allows, affords those people in a county industrial tract to not be, to be incorporated into the city limits. I let that go from, by the request of the city before any of you people were here, but we did let that go. But I might ask, if you're looking for a generation of income and revenue, you might look at some of the companies and people that are located in county industrial tracts, like Affiliated Foods, Nucor, Volcraft, are all in a county industrial tract, I believe. And they can't be incorporated, but maybe that would be a big generator for the city also. So, I don't know if you can look at that and maybe convince them to give up that status and have them help support the city also. They do support the city now, I know, but it would be a big generator and I, as far as income for the city and the taxes. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, but...
Any questions? Thank you, Paul. Ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Hank Scott. Eastern Heights, East Norfolk Avenue. Two questions. One is the water rates that we are now being charged, which is about two and a half times what the city pays. The other question, what about our streets? We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars fixing up our streets. They're in very good shape, probably better than a lot of the city streets. We do not have curb and gutter or sidewalks. Will we be forced to redo our streets and put down curb and gutter and sidewalk? Those are my only questions.
Anyone else or next?
My name is Justin Pollock. I live at 1102 North 37th Street. Just sounds like everybody's up here asking questions that are meant for another meeting. So, I'm going to ask the question, what's the ultimate goal for this annexation? Because if it's to damage everybody in this room and lots of people that didn't attend financially, you're going to achieve your goal. That's all I got to say.
So, I'll try to answer that. Again, just kind of going back to where we have been a little bit historically and where we are now in terms of growth. So, when you look at the 2,000 boundary over here, the blue boundary on this particular map.
We can't see that.
We can't see it.
Again, there hasn't been, maybe we'll just kind of hold it up. Most of the growth over the last 20 years has been over here in the western, western Norfolk community, over there in our commercial corridor, residential growth up in here. When you basically look at this blue boundary, for the most part, it's been following, it hasn't changed. This is still, there's a little bit out here. Walter Z. Snow grows out in here. Paul's developed down here with Lake Meddlin. Again, this is Tractor Business Park and some commercial residential growth over here. The green area is representing those areas outside city limits that are subdivisions of, or either residential or commercial. And now, as up in here, as this grows and when you look at residential where we're growing, you see all this green. This is residential, kind of where our growth is going to be, is out in this area. Well, we can't leapfrog city boundaries across this green. We have to annex eventually. You go up there and sort of, as these things develop, they develop inside the city limits. My other comment is going to be that we exist as a city. The city of Norfolk is about 25,000 people. About 25,000 people. And those 25,000 people that pay the city tax make this city viable. They turn on the streetlights. They create economic development opportunities for businesses. And if we don't incorporate and grow as a community as we continue to grow and develop, we're never going to grow. So, the 25,000 people that live in here want you to become part of the community and participate. There's no, there's no, the whole, this whole, this whole, please, please. This whole conversation of revenue picking, that wasn't the process that goes on here. This is a study based on state statutes of when properties need to become part of the community. What qualifies those properties? Do we look, do we look at the revenue and cost benefit? Absolutely. We want to understand as we're bringing properties in, what might we need to be prepared for? And so, we do that so that we have that information and can understand that.
You don't consider the cost to the people that you're annexing?
Yes.
It's absolute zero. I've looked at the plan, which by the way is wrong. We're not largely served by city sewer and water in 1.2.
Exactly.
There's one or two people out there and it costs them a gazillion dollars to get hooked up. And so, your plan does not take into account anybody's personal costs. Only that 20, 40,000 figure that.
We do think about that. Absolutely, we take that into consideration. And when I, when I read you like the number of $150 a square yard for paving, that's the gross cost of a paving project. It's about 150 for a residential street. In the end, about half of that is consumed by the city and about half of that then gets annexed out. So, other, if you already have a street, then you're not assessed.
Let's just call this out for what it is. It's a land grab by the city. And it's going to raise everybody's prices and taxes and whatever installation fees or whatever you want to call it and force everybody to sell their home.
Yeah.
I'll be forced to sell my home that was a gift from my parents when they died. So, it's a land grab.
It is not a land, it is not a land grab. And I strongly, I strongly...
Aren't you the one who told us we'd never be annexed in about four weeks ago?
Yeah, there you go.
I did, I did not. I did, I did not tell you that you would never...
We had three other people that was there that heard you say that.
I did not say that you would never be annexed.
No, you never, but she says we're not planning it.
We're not planning it.
I did not...
You knew this way before you even out there.
You know, I, again...
I hope the sewer line is not damaged to our property. Now we can't even sell the lots off, but you can destroy it to run over to...
Again, your property, the area of property that you're referring to is in a significant flood... a significant flood zone. Can you really be able to...
No, it's not.
It is, yes, it is.
And then we have somebody put the sewer line in and said you could've went through the fence line after you ruined your property. We can't sell all the law.
The only flooding we got now is because of, uh, you, up there, Ron Sewer Line now, you were just out there because it's tearing the ditches of trees off.
And we're wanting our trees away.
With rains.
So again, way off topic here for this morning's meeting. I appreciate the comments, I appreciate the comments, so we can work through that.
My water bill, my water bill is under regard, please.
If you need to speak, please come up.
Yeah, if you're, if you're gonna speak, please come up.
My water bill is seven hundred and thirty-two dollars for water, my car. I have the best thing to be on city water and you're gonna require this from everybody. Please vote against this plan. I wasn't aware that they put this plan in office in two thousand seventeen, but please vote against this plan.
Anyone else like to speak, come up and speak, please?
I don't wanna be the one that complains and I know that a lot of people are mad, but that sewer that went through my property before, it, it was very expensive and I'm still trying to figure out how to pay that darn thing off. But when that happened, I didn't get one letter or anything and, and I want that to be behind me, but it's expensive. I think I got charged to the tune of, I think seventy thousand, I mean, we can look it up. And if sewers gotta go in, if, I mean, and my property was paid for and now all of a sudden, shit, sorry, I apologize. But it, but what, I, and some of these people, you know, thank goodness I'm working, if these people are retired, how are they supposed to do it? I, I guess, and, and it will go through if he, if it's voted for. And so it just, I don't know. That's all I have to say, but I'm going through it and it's, it...
Kids' college?
When, when, when you're not paying the bill, it, it's a huge thing, so...
I guess I don't have a whole lot to say here. I'm in the one point, four point two, the Eastern Heights Sunrise Edition. I guess the, I am, I guess I wasn't informed enough about the meeting because this is a vote or what it was. I'm probably like, like, like everybody else, we didn't really know what was going on. I moved out my house seventeen years ago and the biggest reason I moved there is because it was out of city limits. You know, we go in town, we buy stuff, I deliver everything to my house, cheaper. You know, it helps mid-city, everybody, all the delivery people helps people with jobs, I feel. I'm not sure how that's gonna work and this is probably a question for another time, but I live on the maps of Stan line. My road is Stan County. My snow removal is terrible. I have to wait for the, the grader for like a day for Stan County to come, you know, but I still don't think this is gonna help me because my road's all in Stan County. We tried to pave it a while ago with the SID, but it's just not gonna happen because it's Stan County. I guess, I don't know, I guess that's all I got to say, you know, that's the reason I moved out there. Really enjoy living out there, you know. We could've moved away, but we lived in town, really didn't like in town, all the people, everything together, found a nice place outside of town, big yard, really enjoyed out there. And I'm not saying this will probably change anything, I'm, I'm hoping it doesn't, but I really don't want the sidewalks, you know, I don't want all the other stuff that goes along with it. So I guess that's all I got to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
I want to be sure you knew, because I couldn't hear all those other folks, I don't know all of their names and, but I was glad to see them up here. Some fairly simple things. First one, you know, one of the biggest problems I've had is trying to understand that map because I couldn't figure out which street was which. There are about two main streets on this tiny map that I had a heck of a time figuring out where Twenty-Fifth Street, Thirty-seventh Street, even Hillview for a while. And I live right at the end of Hillview, as far north as you can get, that nobody can ever find, even when we give them directions. And I don't mind that. I kind of enjoy being out there by myself. Okay, one question that I have then, if we can't get answers to these questions until the next two or three meetings, then how are we supposed to respond to you to give you some direction? Aren't we supposed to be here to help you get some direction on to make a decision whether you go on with this annexation or not?
Well, if, if you remember today, we are simply trying to decide if the proposed annexation that is in front of us matches or is close to the comprehensive plan.
Well, does it or not?
That's what we're here to decide.
Who's gonna decide that? If you look, if you look at these people, I think the decision has been made.
The decision as to whether, the decision, the decision as to whether or not the maps match and the area that's being proposed is within the comprehensive plan takes these questions...
Then what's the purpose of having us here this morning?
We are following state statute and proper meeting notifications and the time for you to be able to come up here and speak as you're allowed to do.
But we're really not allowed to complain?
No. Or... None of us have said, we're, we're, we want to take in what you have to say. I'm just telling you what, what has been laid out in front of us for this commission is to vote on whether or not these maps match.
Okay.
And you do have two other opportunities, one in a, one in, in a, in a public forum that the, the people who did the annexation study will be here to be able to answer those types of questions as well as city staff, and then you'll also be able to, you know, make any comment that you'd like in front of city council for the public meetings.
Well, I would say that it was misleading then on, on the purpose for this meeting. Another thing is, another thing that's been mentioned is cost. You know, as I've grown up, I've al, always wondered why in towns there were these nice huge houses that were built maybe nineteen, twenty or so on, and they had two or three blocks around them or maybe acres, and they had a barn and so on. And I always wondered why these big houses ended up as one little house with maybe a thirty-foot side lot and maybe a fifty-foot back lot. And then I finally got to realize over the years that the reason those nice acreages or at least nice big lot areas came down to just this tiny house, tiny lot with a huge house is the same reason that you're going to change all of our locations because they had to sell because of taxes. And that's what we are going to have to do, and I've heard that several times. We are going to have to sell a major, many of us are gonna have to sell our homes. If I stay where I am, I'm going to have to sell the land that I have, and I'm very fortunate to have that, I've always said that, but I bought it with the intent of enjoying it for my life. And now with we, when we get to these tax increases per square foot, per cubic yard, for hooking up this, for hooking up that, my house is gonna end up being fifty foot on each side also. And my workshop, which I purposely put four hundred feet away just because I thought it looked nicer on the hill or would eventually when the trees grew up and so on, it's gonna be gone because I won't be able to afford to keep all that land. Now, I know that puts me in a situation that a lot of people aren't able to be in. I'm fortunate to have that land. I'm fortunate to be where I am. I'd like to be able to stay there. And I think the city starts, needs to listen more to its citizens. Twenty-five thousand people don't necessarily want us to annex. They may want more money, but that doesn't mean they want us to annex to get that money.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And sometimes the city doesn't need additional money. Maybe the city needs to learn how to use its money more effectively.
My name is Dave Illich. I live up in Sunrise Sub Edition with Eastern Heights up in that area, and I've been up there forty-two years. And just looking over, one of the things that got me when I was reading your letter that this involves a lengthy process. When I broke this all down, you started in two thousand seventeen, why we, didn't we not hear about this until eight-two of twenty-one? We should've. And if it's a lengthy process, why have this figured out? It's gonna be done in six meetings. That's not lengthy to me. We need to hear more about it. And I realize this is no place I can ask questions, but I was on the board when we did the water in Eastern Heights. We have water and sewer up there. But when we did the water, this went around talking about annexation. We were told that the city cannot annex us, would not be costful to it, cost-wise to them to do it because they'd have to put a fire department out in that area. We are as far almost from Norfolk Fire Department to El Dorado Hills, which they have a satellite, to the Eastern Heights area. And since that time period, we've had all the developments out in that area with all the apartments. So I look at it, we don't have anything on the east side of the tracks for fire protection. Everything's on this side of the tracks. So that's all I have to say, totally against it. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I just wanna make one comment, listening to everybody talk. You guys are here to vote on whether you wanna approve what your comprehensive plan is or not approve what the comprehensive plan is. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, it's, it's whether or not the two maps match, the, the proposed and the comprehensive plan, yes.
And I'm here to tell you, you don't have to follow the comprehensive plan because you have it in the past.
Actually, more often than not, we do, sir. More often than not, we do.
More often than not?
Yes, that's correct.
Because you don't know.
We, we do, we do a pretty good job of...
Five votes.
And the, the comprehensive plan is, has just been redone in what, the last five years, I believe?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. We redid the comprehensive plan at that point in time.
I don't understand why you have a comprehensive plan if you don't follow it completely.
Ma'am?
Hi there, my name is Pat Laura. I just have a question. Are you guys elected?
No.
You're appointed by who?
Mayor and council.
How do you apply for this job?
When there's an opening, you can apply for it.
I mean, because you don't have any, really any experience of real estate or development, you depend on an expert to come in and tell you that doesn't even live here. Norfolk's grown eleven hundred people in twenty years. Where's the growth? I mean, where's the big growth? Eleven hundred people because you fight progress.
And this is, this, okay.
So I guess I just, I'm trying to clarify where you guys all came from and what gives you the authority to like tell us what you're gonna do and, you know, I mean, do any of you guys live in the annexation areas?
I'm in city limits myself, not to speak for anyone else.
That's sad.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, sir?
Live in one point four area. And I guess if you're trying to make a decision whether this follows your comprehensive plan or not, measures with it, the only question I would have is the comprehensive plan, is it flawed in the first place?
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open for discussion. Val, would you mind bringing up the comprehensive plan? I mean, we do have this map up here too. Any discussion or discussion on this? I remind everyone again, you've heard it, that we are to vote on whether or not the comprehensive plan that was from two thousand seventeen was well-vetted by the community and city staff matches the proposed annexation that's in front of us today.
If we don't continue to grow as a city, I just think it, I'm not a huge fan of stagnancy. Leaving things stagnant is the, in the way they were or the way they are just prohibits growth. And I, looking forward to the next forty years, I wanna see my, my family grow up here and Norfolk, you know, reach its full potential. So I think it's, it's important to see the, the annexation process, although sucky, clearly. I, I just think prohibiting growth will not be a good thing for the city.
And additionally to that, as we look at developers that wanna build in this, in the community and on the edge of the community, we can't provide city services which are being required by many of the developers if we don't annex because we can't leapfrog city services outside of city limits. And so, you know, as you look at the areas in green that we're developing currently and are going to be developed, what, what is the number of houses or units that we've built in the last, what, three years, isn't it? I wanna say six hundred and some units that have been built?
I'd say that's probably pretty close because I know in the last five years, we've built about four hundred plus apartments in multifamily at least, so probably another couple hundred between duplexes, triplexes and single family.
Right. And as, as we look and try to grow as a community, you know, employers, I don't know how many of you are employers, I'm an employer, I'm having a terrible time finding people because we can't get them to move here because we don't have enough housing. But we're trying to build housing, but how do we build housing if we don't have the services? And, I mean, it goes, it goes on and on and on, and as a viable community that's built, that's growing. I, I know obviously the numbers come out, how many people we've grown in the last X number of years, but it, you know, the census numbers are out, I believe are in the process of out, I haven't seen them yet. And I'm personally, I'm very much looking forward to where Norfolk has grown. I mean, take a look at, at Paul's ground, you know, Meadowman's Lake development that we brought into city limits and how well that has gone over. I mean, it's, you're selling lots on it, it, it's great, Paul. And that's an example of bringing, you know, developments into the community, and I look forward to bringing these other developments that are in process into the community as well. And what else goes on from there? And what else goes on from there?
Why can't just somebody review annex and others? You like put the building?
Because then we end up with potholes of annexations across. And then, then you can't, you wanna get from here to here, but you can't, because this spot is an annex and you can't go across. It, it doesn't work that way.
You're talking like, like the city...
The, the city, the community as a whole, I mean, we grow and, we, we grow and shrink as a community, like it or not. I mean, everybody can pin it back on what the city does, but that's not true. We, as a community, grow. And we grow or we shrink. We do it and we do it together. I mean, like it or not, we're in the same boat. And everybody pins it back, well, the city does this, the city does that. No, we all do this. I mean, and I, I live in city limits and I understand, and I, I lived for seventeen years in, in Woodland Park. I, I know what it is to be out of city limits and I know what it is to be in city limits. I've been in city limits now seven years. And, and I understand. And, and keep in mind, too, I know we didn't address it today, but like, your, your hookup fees for city water and sewer, it's not like day one, you're gonna get a bill and be forced onto city water and sewer. It doesn't work that way. Same thing with streets. Day one, you're not gonna be, I'm sorry?
You're always forced on, when city goes through, you're always forced to vote.
No, no. It doesn't work that way. When you're annexed in...
The plan says the city ought to do that.
The city, the, the plan says a city ought to annex this. It does not say...
It also says it should require...
Okay. This is something, Dr. Lux, that you can bring up to city staff, but is our understanding and what we've been told by city staff, that we will, you will not be forced to do day one, day five, or anything like that, onto city water, sewer, or city streets. We're simply trying to grow as a community. I, those, those are my, my comments.
You've got a ton of undeveloped within city limits, right?
And we are working, we are working those, we're working to develop those very, very quickly. And I, I take BlackBerry, for instance, I know that was brought up earlier, that's a prime example of undeveloped ground that's within city limits that is now being developed.
Right.
Okay. So, please point out large development tracks within existing city limits that are not been, that have not been developed or have not been platted to be developed yet today. Can you point out large development tracks within city, the current city limits?
Looking where there's streets and where there's no streets, there's a lot...
But there, there's, there's things like floodplains, there's things like, just the terrain of the ground itself that can't be done. There's not any large tracks of, of ground within city limits that can currently be developed. Is that an accurate statement by city staff?
If you build a house within three hundred feet of the city, you are forced to vote on the city's...
Within three hundred feet of city services?
You are forced to vote on it.
That's correct.
You just said you...
Do you, no. Do you have an existing house, sir? Do you have an existing residence?
Yeah.
Then you're not going to be forced, day one, to do this.
I was forced. I was within three hundred feet. Twenty-eight years ago, I was.
Okay. Twenty-eight years ago. Okay. I can't speak to twenty-eight years ago. Any other comments? I don't wanna go on and on forever.
I'd just like to build on your comments that whether or not you live within the city limits, I consider you part of our community.
Yeah. I agree.
And just to touch on why, you know, I, I'm, I will be the first one to say it, I am no expert, but I enjoy this community, I love what this community has to offer, and that's why, essentially, I am an unpaid volunteer that's going to be here for the foreseeable future. I want to be a part of the growth, I want to be a part of the Norfolk community, and I think it's important for what we do, this commission, we don't, it sucks being up here sometimes, because we get yelled at. That's not why I do it, I get yelled at enough in my own job. But I think it's important, as a young professional in the community, to have a viable voice in the city. City services and direct things of how we do things in the future. And we may not get it right all the time, but it's, it's progress. And I think that's some, something that Norfolk has done a good job of over the past decade that I've been here. So, that's why I do what I do. I think it's important.
I really, before I know, I was upset, but I, we all want Norfolk to grow, too. We really do, but just like you say, you're a business owner, and I know you are, but if it's not a win-win for everybody, it doesn't work. And, and I know it's hard to find that scenario, but, but, you know, when it's a win-win for everybody, then it works. And I know it's hard to keep everybody happy, because...
Well, and, and that's the problem, Charles, you know, yes, in a perfect world, it's a win-win for everybody. And I mean, everybody. And by everybody, I mean every single member of the community. You are all adversely affected in this one, but I can tell you, I, I've been up here for, I think, five or six years now, and the, I, there, there's about three or four of you that I've seen in front of us, and we make these kinds of decisions every two weeks. But it didn't affect you then, right? And so, then you don't show up. Okay? And so, the people that it's affecting in the positive didn't show up, because it didn't affect them, and I'm okay with it. Right? We only hear the negative side every two weeks when we're up here. And, and like I said, short of just a handful of you that I've seen, I know, Charles, you've been here before, and, and a couple of others, and Paul's another one, and, you know, so, yes, I want everybody to win. I wanna win. I'm not winning, I'm not losing on, on any of this, right? As a community member. And most of them are not. It's just, like I said, every two weeks, we make these types of decisions, and, you know, they're tough decisions, and we have to look at it objectively to figure out what's part of the greater good. This one affects you guys, the next, the last hundred of them that we've had, haven't. So...
I appreciate what you guys do, but I just feel like I'm just getting taxed for that all the time.
Well, we all are. I, I mean, we're, we're not in the same boat. I'm in city limits, I'm getting taxed exactly what you're going to be taxed? I know exactly what it's like. I, I, I don't disagree with you. And I don't think anybody in this room would disagree with you, but...
There's just some people that are on fixed income, and they have their house paid for, and now they're looking at more expenses. I'd hate to have a long row of property and have to pay for a street.
That's a great question for the next forum, sir.
Hundred fifty dollars a yard.
That's, that's a great question for the next forum, sir. Like, you know, sorry, I'm letting this get a little out of hand.
I just wanna make a quick comment. I agree, I appreciate you guys up there, if anybody's ever been on a board before. It's not always fun. My concern is, is it seems like you're annexing in a lot of different areas around town. My concern is, is the police, is the rescue, and this man, is that too much to take on at one time? Is this something maybe we should try to do smaller areas and not all at one time? I guess that's my...
And, and my, my address to that would be, we have, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not done a forced annexation in recent history in any way, shape, or form. Is that accurate? Okay. And we have a lot of ground to catch up on in what should have been in city limits twenty years ago.
I would just assure, you know, that question's come up here a couple times, and I would assure you, it's a function of staff input on this process, our fire department and our police, all, all of our city services have been at the table to get to this point. And we wouldn't be presenting it to you if there was concern from a public safety perspective.
Any, any other comments?
Can I make a comment?
Real quick, Paul.
I guess I would like to hear from all of the commissioners, their, their position. I assume this will come up in a vote with yours, with the commission at a future date?
I believe we're done, one and done here.
You're done?
It's city council will hear it three times. There will be one public hearing within that city council, within those readings. So, you'll have, you'll have one more time to address city officials, or elected officials in a public sitting like this.
With that in mind, that you're the last time you'll be addressing this, would, could we hear from each commissioner, their position?
I'll, I'll leave that up to the commissioners as to whether they want to...
How they would, I mean, the vote itself is gonna be pretty simple. If that map does match the comprehensive plan, that's...
That's what we're here to vote on today.
It's tough. We've, we've got a limited mandate, you know? We, we don't have a lot of control over all the ins and outs of this. So, our focus is just this map. And I feel for everyone in here. It's, it's pretty unfortunate. And... It's unfortunate.
And I'll, I'll leave that up to the commissioners. If you guys wanna make a statement, by all means, if you don't, don't feel that you have to. But any other comments that anybody had, any commissioners have, otherwise, we'll take this to a vote.
I would just stress to everyone here that, that city, everyone is here, everyone's participating in the process. Continue participating in the process, including going to the meeting with the city at the library. I feel like a lot of the questions that you all have will be answered there with the people who were part of, at the table, having that conversation, just, you know, and, and so that, that is an emphasis I'd make to you guys. As a person who's only lived in the community for about two, two and a half years now, I moved from Lincoln to Norfolk. I am excited about Norfolk. I never thought I would say I am excited about Norfolk, but I am. Norfolk surprised me. And so, when I moved here, I had one idea of what I thought Norfolk was and what it is. Since moving here, since living here, since becoming a part of the process, the community that work here, I work in surrounding counties, I work in a lot of the surrounding counties. And so, Norfolk is the only other place that I would live here. I just, I have fallen in love with Norfolk, I truly have. And part of the reason I've fallen in love with Norfolk is because it is growing in the way that it is. And there are growing pains, but I do believe that this is part of the process.
Dan, could I ask one more question?
One.
The, I'm confused, you can't jump from one area to another with services without being contiguous?
Correct.
How did the extended sewer system a couple of years back fit into that, when it jumped through quite a lot of land that is now going to be annexed to get to a different development?
Can I clarify on that? Dan?
Yes, please.
It's, it's not, the contiguity requirement is not as far as the provision of services, it's for the annexation itself. So, those are, those are, those are separate.
And that's another great question you can bring up on the twenty-fifth to city staff and, I mean, have them...
So, they can amend the annexations to leapfrog if they want to?
No, we can't, we can't leapfrog annexation. You'll notice that there's no pockets that...
Who says you can't leapfrog?
State statute.
State statute does.
He wrote the state statute.
Probably Lincoln.
Legislation. Abraham Lincoln?
States, state statute, sir, would be written by the legislature.
There's a difference between leapfrogging and taking some of the annexation, though, isn't there?
What is in front of us is an all-or-nothing map. That's what we're voting on today, is whether or not the all-or-nothing map.
What I'm asking is, does the city, at the next few meetings or afterward, have the opportunity to change the amount of annexation?
That's a great question to bring up on the twenty-fifth. I, I don't believe that to be the case, but that's a great question to bring up on the twenty-fifth. Okay. All right. I, I've done, gonna, we, we've closed the public hearing, so...
I'd hope that you all would vote for this plan, maybe do a revised study. I see so many parcels, like, for instance, again, the Bedford Division out there took four years to develop. This is reaching out so far.
This really isn't reaching out that far, sir. If you take a look at where we're actually growing, where the developments are happening, and you have to understand, too, like I said, we sit up here every two weeks and we approve plaits for ground that's currently being developed, that's, that's being looked at by developers and all of those...
You're also, you're also a community that will never have anything to do with the city, too.
I do not believe that to be accurate, sir.
It's not viable for homes or industry or anything like that. You know, I know you, I know it's a lack of... To give the city all the honor it needs, but...
Okay. We're, we have the public hearing closed, so we'll go ahead and, any other discussion by the commissioners? If not, I'd take a motion and we'll move forward.
I'd move to approve the recommendation of areas proposed annexation to amend the corporate limits as authorized by section sixteen dash one-seventeen, NRS nineteen forty-three.
Right second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, go ahead and please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. Next up, consideration recommendation, or consideration to recommend approval of the... Let it quiet down.
Please stay.
We'll let it quiet down first. What's that? Yeah. I'm gonna let it quiet down a little bit. Yeah, you're fine. Thanks, Lyle.
Kids, I, I just think it's unfortunate, but that's the nature of the cost. Sure, and you're...
Wanting nice things.
You know? If we're not the bad guys, that's, that's gonna...
It's tough. Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and continue here, so if we could have it, we, we do have a couple of agenda items left. Lyle, if you'd like to address, this is the one and six-year improvement plans.
Six will be Steven. I'll be the CIP capo.
I'm sorry.
One and six will be Steven. I'll be the...
Yeah.
CIP.
Okay. So, the one and six-year improvement plans, whoever wants to kick us off.
What page are you on there?
On page forty-seven, first page of the CIP.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Lyle Ludd. I'm the operations and risk guy for the city of Norfolk. What you have in front of you here right now is a step in the process of approving the capital improvements program, which from here goes to city council for approval along with the budget. You can see, the, the goal of the long-term, the goal of the CIP is to stabilize the long-term financial plan for the city. Tell you, I'll give you the, kind of the anatomy of what you're looking at for the folks that may be new to it. From this page on down, the next seven pages, ten pages or so, are purchases in excess of fifty thousand dollars over the next ten years, the city will be looking at. So, as I go through this, you can reference your packet, and we can come back and perhaps you can ask specific questions about it if you want. The team, this process starts in probably February, March timeframe. The team's made up of myself, Steven, public safety director, was Sheen Weidner, will likely be Scott Quarters going forward, Sheila Rios in accounting, and Randy Gates, finance director for the city of Norfolk. And this is kind of a dynamic document that changes every year as, as you look at the spreadsheet, you can see it projected all the way out to twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-one. And it's basically a treadmill, a conveyor belt, that takes those long-term purchases, those high-dollar purchases, and brings them forward with a, a means of paying for them. So, when the budget time draws near, it plops right into the budget with a funding source, and it's ready to roll. The goal, like I mentioned, was to make sure that the long-term financial plan, which is longer than this ten years that we're seeing here, it goes out twenty, thirty years, to keep that in the positive. in the positive. As you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see across the top, the date that it's good for, in the first column, the project number, followed by a division. All the purchases are allocated to a division, yeah, just like that. General fund, enterprise funds across the board. A general description of what they are in the next column. The priority, designated A, B, C, A being urgent, C being desirable. The total estimated project costs, and then one through 10 years out, as well as, I should say, expended prior to. So some projects, they take Benjamin Avenue, for example, they'll span multiple years. So they'll have a designated amount, but 20% will be spent one year, 60% will be spent the next year, and the remaining amount the following year. So you can see where previous allocations were spent before that. Also across the top, and this is important, you'll see the funding sources, and those abbreviations by each of those dollar amounts indicate where that money is coming from for those payments. Now, we can go into this as deep as you like, if there's specific questions or specific divisions or passions that you're interested to hear about, we can do that. Keep in mind, I'm not a subject matter expert on any division, really, but I can give it a shot.
My biggest question would be, you know, obviously we see this every year, what are the, what's, highlight the major changes from, the unanticipated major changes from what last year's was, if you would?
Let's see, unanticipated, or we, I mean, every once in a while, there's something that gets thrown in, you know, that we weren't really expecting, you know, big ticket items, something like that. I mean, if there's not, there's not, I just... Can you ponder that a second, and I'll talk about, I'll talk about the problems that unanticipated challenges make. It's, it's, the, the best way for this to unfold is for equipment to be placed or product purchases to be placed 10 years out, and then it easily massages into the budget. The problem comes in when suddenly we gotta make a big purchase next year, so we try to avoid that in all the possible...
No, I, I understand that, and, and typically you do. I'm just curious, is there anything that's like majorly standing out? I, I didn't see anything, but I didn't compare last year to...
Perhaps, if you want to just kind of flip down through it a little, a little bit, I can talk about, about some of the things that may have popped up this year that probably weren't on there last year. Under the admin category, we got wayfinding signage in there at 125,000 down there at item number five. We've been working with a wayfinding consultant, making wayfinding for communities all across the United States, it's, it's a very niche market, they're extremely good at it. They have completed the wayfinding program for downtown and specific, for the Norfolk Avenue corridor, maybe through downtown, maybe 4th Street, trying to do anything up, 4th Street in the downtown area. And so this 125,000 specifically will allow us to re-sign the downtown parking lots. Well, there is a conversation about moving away from all the variety of permitted parking downtown, opening up the lots so that the lots are just available, most likely at no cost, it would just be free parking. And so that, this 125 is to purchase the signs, get them manufactured, purchase and get them, we would then install it in the city, this only covers the manufacturing and delivery of the signs. So that's, that's new. Electric vehicle, charging station, engineering, so anticipating that probably out there a couple of years, we'll, we'll, we'll want to do another new charging, I'll go down through, what's the next one? Streets, or the big significant change here on streets is we've got a couple snowplows in there at 205, so number one and number two are 205,000. Historically, we've been purchasing our snowplows around 100 to 130, but we know we need to get some larger snowplows, we'd like to get what's called a wing blade, the wing blade is a blade that hangs out to the side about eight feet so that we can plow shoulders more in those rural areas, but we can also rather than have, when we plow, we tend to have like four plows in tandem behind each other, you've probably seen that. With the wing blades, we can eliminate a plow, so as we grow, we can do more streets with less equipment. So it's gone to 205,000 for the plow, fully outfitted with a belly blade and a wing blade. And we push that throughout, throughout, might go down, maybe just zoom down there and keep going, going, landscape master plan, there's really no change there. I, I would share with you that we are currently negotiating a contract with Clark Anderson Company to move into the design phase of our master plan and actually get Highway 275 corridor and Highway 81 corridor designed. Most of that's going to be in the median areas, down at the actual intersection, that will be a broader landscape plant down there. Johnson Park, really no change there. That project's teeming up, getting ready to go out for bids this fall. Trails, park expansion, 275 went across, no changes, no changes on any of that.
The changes associated with any of those is typically, goes along with funding sources, different funding sources come along.
Yeah, and I know we've had some additional funding sources that...
Every year, every year we redo this, we do update the costs, if there's a need to update, so we'll update all 10 years to today's cost. Behind there's a spreadsheet then that, that puts in the cost escalation over time, fire, I don't know where we did specific to fire, water plant, some stuff there. We are looking, just to look at number four, probably updated number four maybe a little bit, so that's a new vertical production well. Vertical well and pipeline, it's actually probably going to be a horizontal well. We have what we call a horizontal well, looks like a ceiling fan almost, an inverted ceiling fan that's down in the ground and heats both blades and promotes in water versus a single tube, vertical tube. We have one production well, the rest of our wells are vertical. We're looking to drop a new production well on 37, just kind of crossing Bradbury Park, kind of a function of some conversation up here just in terms of our, our growth. We work on a 20-year water master plan and water sewer plan. I tell people that I meet and visit with, when we visit about our, our jobs, I'm, within our, within what I do, I'm thinking five years, 10 years, and 20 years on a weekly basis. I'm looking at, where are we today, what do we need in the next five, 10, and 20 years? And if, part of that is laying this, this out every year. But again, this, this, this production well would add about two, two and a half to three and a half million gallons a day to our capacity. Keep going down. Probably the only, I don't see anything there really in, we did have Frog Creek, what you see there, number 11, the Frog Creek sewer extension, again, that is way out there, I don't know, eight, nine years. We're seeing a lot of requests for residential development on East Bench, starting to push out at the Stafford County thing. We're not encouraging that at this time, as people are kind of talking to us about some of those bigger developments, we're encouraged that more towards other areas of the community, but at some point, we know we're going to be growing east on Bench and Avenue, and so this is looking at a sewer extension out east, this would be a large sewer intercepting project that would then allow property out there enough for, for enrollment. So that's new this year. WPC is our water pollution control facility. The big project on there that we're kind of working on, keep going down, is the grit So number 32 there. Our sewer plant, we can run upwards of about, oh, 10 and 10 and a half million gallons a day through the plant, but when we're running at that kind of capacity, that would be like a flood capacity basically. We're not treating for say 100%. Our, we have what, a sewer plant and a water plant that we call a firm capacity, and that's a pinch point somewhere in the process that limits your, your ability. And so our firm capacity of the sewer plant is about 5.7 million gallons a day. This grit improvement, the grit improvement is what takes all the grit out, so as, as the effluent is coming in, the sewage is coming in, goes into a grit facility that drops majority of the grit out. Ours isn't that effective, hey, it's quite old, the process is old. This, this project right here, this one project will effectively double our firm capacity. It will go from a plant with, that can treat 5.7 million gallons a day to a plant that treats about 11 million gallons a day. And so we're working, that project should be going out the door for construction next Flood wall, you see that flood wall there, that project is going to be moving around as a function of the 2019 flood. The plant, we had to effectively abandon the plant, we had one operator out there, and we had emergency teams ready to pick that person out of that plant, if the floodwater has gotten about another three or four inches high. We were already landlocked out of the plant. This is going to, this project here will put a flood wall about four feet high completely around the plant, protect the plant from future flooding. And it would also create a way for us to pump against that higher river head. So when the river starts to come up into that flood capacity, right now we can't gravity flow out of the system, so our system backs up. So that's some good stuff going on there, and it's just looking at risk management for our system in the future. What's the next category? Solid waste management. So that's solid, S, M, SWNG.
Solid waste management.
That's our solid waste, our transfer station area. We're getting ready to award construction on improvements out there, it's about 4.5 million dollars. So those numbers will probably be tweaked just a little bit to reflect file design and engineer capability. The CHAF, nothing, nothing has really moved here, we're pretty much locked in on our CHAF budget based on our available CHAFs. CHAF is our acronym for City Highway Allocation Funds. Those are the funds that get to gas tax dollars that come in through the Department of Renovate and Fishery. We give about 3.3 to 3.4 million dollars a year, and this spreadsheet is showing how we, how we extend that. You know, the big projects that are kind of plugged in there. Michigan Avenue, where the conversation came up last year in one of our public meeting sessions, some people that live down in that area complaining about Michigan Avenue and that Phase II portion that was supposed to be done about, I don't know, eight, nine years ago. That is, that's number three, I have Michigan Avenue that's tied into the 8th Street improvements. Trying to find the 8th Street improvement, 8th Street from Michigan to Omaha. Those two projects are kind of tied together, they're being designed as, as one big project. And that decision by council last year to extend 107,000 dollars to, to us, rather, I can't remember the full conversation, but they left 170,000 dollars in their budget for us, we're going to bond, use that to bond Michigan Avenue project, Paint Street project. The only other thing on there, street shop master plan, item number 14, that's an add this year. We know that long-term, our, our street maintenance facility and public works maintenance facility that sits down there between Omaha and Michigan, between 8th and 9th, that's probably not a long-term place for us. Crystal ball, 10 years, we might probably be looking to somewhere else more to the large master plant facility. So number 14 is the space needs, this would allow us to bring a consultant on board and start to analyze how much space do we need, how we can decide do we need, start to kind of get that place to be structured, some funding for, for that in the future.
Other questions I can have Steven answer.
No, I appreciate that, though.
Pretty thorough.
Any other questions? Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Lyle.
You betcha.
We do need a motion on this to accept, send to city council.
Move to prove, recommend approval of the 2022-2031 Capital Improvement Plan, which includes the 2021 through 2026, one and six-year street improvement plans.
Second.
Any discussion? Not go ahead and please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, and June, July building reports.
Okay, so since we didn't have the meeting that one day, we are doing June, and so in June, we had last year 23 single-family detached, this year 30, we're up to 35 with no new ones in June. One duplex, two units last year, none in July, or June, sorry. Multifamily, last year we had 29 permits with 257 units, this year we have two with 40 multifamily units, no new in June. And we had four small commercial ones come in. Single-family detached were equal from last year to this year with 12 units. And then building valuation were about 35.3 million less than last year, because we had a lot of large commercial industrial stuff come in last year, so building valuation's a little off. July, we had four new permits come in for single-family detached, so we're 29 last year, 39 this year. Duplex, we had two permits come in equalling four units, so we have four units this year with two last year. Multifamily remains the same with 257 units last year, 40 this, no new permits, no new commercial in July, and we're still the same on single-family attached from 12 to 12. And building valuation in July is 52.2 million less than last year.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Val. Any other open topics or concerns anybody would like to bring forward? Now I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move. Thank you.